And Ms. Madeline, I think we probably should do a roll call.
Director McDonald?
Here.
Director Morgan?
Here.
Director Tremblay?
Here.
Secretary Craven?
Here.
Chair Kildy?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, would you mind leading us in the flag salute tonight?
Could everyone please stand, face the flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, public comments for the sanitary district. Nobody's making a mad dash down here, I guess. Okay, that brings us to item three, that's the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
It's a motion there, second.
Second.
Any further discussion, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, okay, well, let's get down to comments from the staff. Any comments?
No comments.
Comments from board members? Ms. Craven, I believe you had one?
Yes, I attended the CASA and water reuse legislative day in Sacramento last week. And it was, it was one of the best leg days I've, I've attended. The most interesting part, isn't going to sound interesting, but it was a panel discussion by the chiefs of staff of the speaker of the assembly and the minority leader of the senate. So we got both perspectives. And telling what all those people do, and I've emailed to Dave, I don't know if we already were doing it, but we needed to always, we need to always include those two people on our list of people we send letters to. And they told us of a new 10-day rule so that the staff members of the chairman of each committee do not distribute letters that come in more than 10 days after, before the committee meets. Yeah. Even if there have been changes in the bill, so they said always make sure that you have somebody hand carry them to the, the members of the committee if they're within 10 days of the committee meeting. And also send them to the majority and minority staff people, chief of staff, asking them to distribute them to the committees. I just thought that was really interesting. I'd never heard it before. We, there was a long discussion about it. And it's hampered some letters already before people knew about it. And the way it was brought forward was not by these people, but they explained it, the two chiefs of staff. It was brought forward by Jeff Reinhardt, who's the publicity person and the legislative person for Las Vergenes Water District. He had found out from his new assembly member, and I forget his name, but he's the one who replaced Fran Pavly, that he had not received Jeff's letter before a committee meeting. He was on the committee, and he found out why. And so, that, that was one of the most important things. Anyway, we then in the afternoon had teams, and we visited the, Henry Stern, that's who the person was. Yes. And we visited Senator Stern's office. We met with Matthew, I'm going to pronounce it wrong, Dababna? Or Dababna? I don't know. We met with Diana Vu, who was very interested. We met with Jackie Irwin and Hannah Beth Jackson. And I had to leave before we met Monique LeMone. But I was with a group from Carpinteria and Guelita sanitary districts. The four bills we were talking about were enhanced funding for recycled water, helping small communities govern onsite water treatment plants. There are two things there. They were introduced by, I think it was Chu from, yes, San Francisco and Wiener. And Wiener's from Anaheim? He's brand-new. It doesn't matter where he's from. But these two bills were important to CASA. The first one was important to water reuse, but I thought it was. And then advancing portable water reuse by Quirk. And we talked a lot about this Quirk bill. He's a real advocate of it, and things may, he was elected in November, things may go far. Anyway, it was very interesting, and I think it was worth my time in the city's sending me.
Great. Thank you for that report. Anybody have anything else? Okay, so with that, well adjourned.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council, meeting, meeting of the Camrio City Council to order. I've got two meetings in there. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
Madam Mayor, Staff would request that we move debt management policy and citizen advisory committee on land use disbandment to the end of this evening's agenda.
Where are they?
Where is that?
Those are in 5A Finance and 9A City Manager.
My understanding is we need to be into our study session earlier than later.
Yes, we have some time constraints this evening.
Which is the second?
The second one is City Manager, item A under City Manager.
Oh, okay.
So on the page three, it's those two items. So after the consent calendar, we'll move to administrative services then, and try to get that one out of the way, though.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other thing from council? I have two items that I'd like to talk about on the consent calendar. One I'd like to vote on separately, that being item F, so I'd like that one pulled. And then the other one I would like to discuss is item N, so we can pull that one as well.
I don't need to, well, I'll say that later. I don't need to pull it, but I have a comment on K.
What was the last second one, Jan?
Um, N, so I have something on F, N, and then Mrs. Craven has something on K.
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, we don't need to pull it.
Well, I can probably, well, N I need to pull, because I have a question. F I just want to vote on separately.
Public Works is for N?
For N. And then I understand, as we go through it, that under item B, our dispersments, Mr. Tremblay has to abstain because of a couple items. Am I got the right one?
Correct. And if I, the city attorney will correct me if I state what's wrong, but I'll, I'll be abstaining on item B because two of the payees are clients of my law firm, but I would be voting on all the rest of the consent calendar items. Did I state that accurately?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, I think we got, thank you. So I think we got the consent calendar figured out there. So we have no presentations, we move on to the consent calendar. We have the statement Mr. Tremblay just made having to do with item B, which makes no action other than the city clerk needs to note it. So we go to item K, and you had a comment?
My only comment is, and this is final pay and accepting improvements, I really noticed a lot of, more of what I call rolling bumps. There's some on Las Poses and some on Ponderosa, where it's just wavy and bumpy. And I don't know if that was a slurry seal or a, whatever the other one's called.
Charlotte, where, where were those?
Ponderosa and Las Poses.
And Las Poses.
But I just wanted to comment that I haven't noticed those in the past, and we sure have a lot of them now.
If I can address, I know you've mentioned the one on Las Poses, and we marked that one for a repair, and it did, for some reason, got increasingly worse as we went through and did the slurry seal. We don't expect that it has anything to do with a slurry seal, it's possibly a root situation going on there with the trees on.
There's nothing planted there.
On the.
A brand-new, probably two-year-old boganvia is the only thing.
In the median, right, but there's street trees on the side, so the, the older pine trees can, and that type of pine tree can tend it, all of a sudden it'll just pop, and so we're going to take, we're going to repair that one.
The others, almost the whole, the, the inside lane toward the median, a good part of between Carmen and, I get Brantley and the next, what's the first signal? The first block?
Brantley.
Brantley.
On Ponderosa?
On Ponderosa.
Okay, I'll take a closer look at that.
A lot of them there. You almost, it doesn't matter how slow you go, you almost think you're skipping, speeding up too fast.
And typically, it's a underlying existing pavement condition that the slurry seals, you know.
Magnify.
Typically, yeah, the slurry seal doesn't necessarily cause it, so those are the.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
That was all, okay. I have a question on N, and maybe we can do it just quickly rather than pulling it out. This has to do with the vacation of director and alternative director appointments to the rural Santa Rosa Valley Basin groundwater sustainability agency. And I understand the premise of us not being involved because we're being told that no water will be delivered to any of our citizens from that basin, correct?
Correct.
And that's true now and into the future, so they can't make a switch?
That's correct. The, the whole GSA, GSP is addressing a basin, managing the basin itself, and the limits of this basin start east of the city limits. So that basin serves, and Camrosa's verified that, that is, the water that's coming out of that basin and being used is used east outside of city limits.
Other than the city, okay, so I understand that. My one concern is, and going back to when we first talked about getting involved in this, if we give up our seats, our seats go to the county, our, I guess both of them, right, the director and the option?
Right. Yeah, I believe the way it's written is they have the option to fill those seats, which you would possibly expect that to happen, it's not automatic.
So does that tilt it to the county having more of control over this than Camrosa?
No, there's, so currently it's seven members for the board of directors, and five of the directors, existing directors from Camrosa are on the board. And then currently ourselves, the Camrio, and County of Ventura have one seat also. So if they would take another seat, our vacated seat, it would be two county board of directors, or directors on the board, and then five of the Camrosa board members would remain.
Okay, so I just want to make sure they weren't getting a superpower into the other, okay. That was my only question on that one. So I think we've answered all the questions on the consent calendar. The one thing I'd ask is when we make the motion, can we do a, a separate motion on item F? I don't need to talk about, I just want to vote on.
I'll move the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item F.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
It's understood that I'll be recusing on B.
With Mr. Tremblay's note on B, okay. No further discussion, please vote. And that does pass unanimously.
I'll move the approval of item F on the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'm going to be voting on no on this, I voted no when the item came before, and this is the, this, the second reading of it. So with that, please vote. And that does pass for yes, with Mrs. McDonald voting no. Okay, this completes the consent calendar. Let's go down to under administrative services, it's award bids LB 1401 Camrio Library, young adults' area interior remodel, and cooperative agreements to purchase furniture for the project.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you just mentioned, this agenda item is to consider the award of bids for the Camrio Public Library, a young adults' interior remodel. Staff is asking you to consider awarding a base bid, an alternative bid one, to Kowit's general building contractor for a total bid amount of $576,847, and bid schedule two for CCTV to dial security at the total bid amount of $33,865, and to consider authorizing the purchase of furniture and millwork through cooperative purchasing contracts with Palmer Hamilton and Yamada Enterprises. As you know, this project is to improve the functionality and increase the usable space for the young adults inside our library by reconfiguring the existing space and adding a wall for sound mitigation. A mandatory job walk was conducted, and one bid was received for the general contractor base bid, an alternative bid number one, which as I mentioned consists of custom furniture and millwork. There was also one response for the CCTV bid, which is to put in additional security cameras and tie them into our existing system. There were no bids received for the audiovisual and signage, which can either be added to the general contractor's scope or bid separately. Interior furniture, benches, chairs, et cetera, are available through the state and national competitively bid contracts, which our purchasing policy allows us to use. Staff is requesting authority to purchase goods and services through Palmer Hamilton and Yamada Enterprises using CMAS and NJPIA contracts for $25,557.70 for Palmer Hamilton, and $105,390.67, and an additional $29,379.74 to Yamada for various furniture, book stack, relocation, and millwork projects. Additional costs for audiovisual are estimated to be $57,403, and signage is estimated to be $11,068, or $268, which will be subject to change order, as I mentioned, or separately bid to complete the installation. Based upon the total estimated cost of $840,268 for the construction and allowing for a $10,000 contingency fee, staff is also requesting an additional appropriation of $180,000 to complete the work. The suggested actions are in your agenda, and we're here to answer any questions. We also have Sean Leonard, our project manager, and several of my staff members here to answer questions if needed.
Thank you very much. Questions, Mr. Kildy?
Yeah, Richard, the, as it was explained, the minor irregularities, how does that, how did that come about, and how potentially were they solved?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
The minor irregularities were minor. The, the definition of a minor irregularity is one that does not impact the price or the amount of the bid. One of the minor irregularities was there's a requirement in the contract that at least 50% of the contract work be done by the general contractor, and that the subcontracts should equal less than 50%. Well, in this bid, the general contractor bid 31% of the work would be done by the general, and the balance, which would be 69%, would be done by subcontractors. So I reviewed that, and I reviewed the law, and it's my opinion that the fact that the percentage is lower than 50% is, is one that the council can waive, and should waive for a lot of reasons, including the fact that this was the only bid that was received for this project. And there was a meeting that Mr. Leonard and Mr. Petropolis and the other city staff attended, as well as myself, with this general contractor, and I believe our collective conclusion was that he appeared to be qualified based on experience with a number of other projects for several public entities, familiar with the public wage, excuse me, prevailing wage requirements, certified payroll, had worked with a number of his subcontractors in the past, and his references did check out, so, you know, there was the only, only the one bid, but at least there was one. So the irregularities, in my view, were minor. The other ones were a difference in the, slight difference on the dates of the contractor's license and things like that. So they were all minor, and in my opinion, can be waived by the council.
Were they, have we used this contractor before, and like you had mentioned, that you checked out his references, and obviously they do check out, or you wouldn't bring this forward?
Yes, city, city staff did check with the references for this general contractor, and maybe.
No, Mr. Kildy, we have not used this contractor in the past.
I just asked this, because, you know, typically we get more than one bid, and the fact that we got one, I just want to make sure that this, you know, individual, this, this.
We, we believe that the contractor is qualified, and we did vet his references.
Okay.
And my comment had to do with the checking of the references, and yes, Mr. Petropolis is right, we've not used this contractor before.
He did use it before, or he?
Did not, we've not used the contractor before.
Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
That's great. Down this way, Mr. Tremblay.
Just a couple of quick questions. Part of the verification process, Mr. Petropolis, is, is checking to see that the contractor is registered with the Department of Industrial Relations.
That is correct.
In their labor compliance program, and that was done here, right?
Yes, it was.
I, I, just as a comment, I was originally thinking, wow, minor irregularity, but then I remembered, wait a minute, there was just one bidder for the base bid, because ordinarily the legal test would be, as you stated, Mr. Pyrick, and whether or not it gave a competitive disadvantage to that particular bidder, but here, we had one bidder on the base bids.
That was a pretty easy call.
Pretty easy call. Thank you.
Any idea why we only had one bid? Was it just a small job, or what's the thought?
Well, there, there's a number of conjectures concerning that. It can be the size of the job. Right now, our understanding is that there's a lot of work to be had, so our job kind of falls in the middle of things. It's probably not large enough to attract the, the bigger contractors, and it may be due to the, our requirements may not attract some of the smaller contractors, so it's kind of in the middle there. There's any number of reasons that we only got the bids we got. We did have, I believe it was a total of eight contractors do the walkthrough, but we only got the one bid.
It might, it might be worthwhile, since Mr. Leonard's here, to at least ask him about his impressions of the contractor, because we did meet with him, and I know that he might be able to share his thoughts on that.
We can do that. It's bothering, it's bothering me a little bit, and maybe we're all just a little protective of that library. And it was done so well when it was originally built, and Mr. Leonard obviously was involved with that. And I just want to be sure that we're not just taking somebody because they're the only bidder, and particularly when there are irregularities, and it kind of bothers me that they don't even have the dates right on their licensing, so.
Well, that was only, it was a very minor, like, for example, I think they put in 1982, they just put the year, the specific date was December 2nd, 1982.
So they just left the date off?
The date, yeah, the, the month and the day.
Your Honor, just, I, I agree with him about the jobs. I went out to Earth Day the other day, and there were four different, four different construction areas over in the Riverside area, Riverside, Oxnard.
River Park.
River Ridge. There, there were four different projects, not the same person doing work in that area. I mean, big, big projects, not little.
Mr. Leonard, would you, where is he? There he is. Oh, I, do you have something else?
I'll ask later if you do.
To put my glasses on to find you way back there.
Good evening, council. Yeah, we checked their references, and they were public entities as well, and they all said they would use them again. And we met with these folks, they're a small firm, they have an office on Daily Drive in Camrio, and I think the consensus of the group was they could build the project, they're familiar with the requirements. To answer your question about the lack of bids, we've seen that quite a bit, you know, everybody is really busy. We had another bid last week for a public school district to the north of us, and no bids. Even though we had a mandatory job walk, and we had about four contractors, but it's a combination of a smaller project with prevailing wage, and the contractors have a lot of options right now, and they'll probably pick the easier ones.
They're not hungry.
But you will keep an eye on them, right? We're going to entrust you with this, as we did it when we first built it, so.
Yes.
You're going to be our safety net there, okay. Mr. Tremblay, did you have something else?
It was more of an observation, Madam Mayor, and I was looking at, in terms of the staff report, it was talking about the budget review, and I was always interested in what the engineer's estimate of the total costs might be. And it looks like this is going to be a total of about 100, I'm sorry, $840,000, but we had a, we had a, about $669,000 in the budget for it, so we are going to be going substantially over that amount, but I think part of that may be simply be a function that a lot of contractors are very busy. And that's why, would I be fair in thinking that that is why we are paying an extra amount of money?
I think that's a huge part of the reason.
And then you have to add on to that, that we don't even know the cost of the few things that we didn't get a bid on. That's another unknown, of not knowing what that's going to come in at, so.
Yes, we do have the architect's estimates, but we don't know the cost until they're bid.
I would mention that you do have the legal right to reject this bid, if, and go out and rebid if you wanted to. The only problem is, if you do that, you might get higher bids the next time, or you might get no bid, so it's kind of a bird in the hand situation.
Your Honor, I'm going to step out and move the approval of this item.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Okay, my, I'm, I'm, I'm a little leery of it, one, we're paying a couple hundred thousand dollars more than what we expected to, and, and I'm, where did he go? I'm trusting you. Take good care of it. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Is this all four motions?
Yes.
Or just, okay. Oh, should we have taken the irregularities part separately?
You can just move staff recommendations, it'd be fine.
Exactly. So it's one through four.
One through four.
And that does pass unanimously, with a little hesitation on my part. Thank you all for being here. Okay, 4:05, 27, we have three minutes. Okay with that, can we have the city attorney announce our closed session items?
Yes, we have three closed session items tonight. The first one is a real property matter, a conference with real property negotiator, the authority, it's government code section 549, 56.8. This property, the APN number is in the agenda, it's on Arneal, near Berry. There's the other real property matter, which is same government code section. That property, excuse me, I misspoke, the first one I meant to say was the Larson property, and that one is the one that's located just south of the, where the new toppers is going to go in, off Arneal. So that's the first one on the agenda. And then the, the, the other property item is the one that's on Arneal. And the negotiating parties for the ones on Arneal are JBK Properties and Arthur Negretti. And then those, the, the other closed session item is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. That's pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9D2. The number of cases is two.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will recess to our study session, and then hopefully some closed sessions, and we'll be back at 7:30. I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council back to order, and let the record reflect that all council members are present. Mr. Kildy, could you leave us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any amendments to this evening's agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Anything from staff, anything from council? Okay. We will move on, and the first item this evening is a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. So, we welcome Roberto Martinez, who is the president and CEO. Welcome. And if you could state your name for the record, just to make sure.
Thank you. My name's Roberto Martinez. I am the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. And I'm sorry, what was that last piece?
Oh, you just did it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I just thought, is it already?
You knew the rules. But welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor McDonald, and council members, and city manager, and city attorney. So, the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo is celebrating a milestone this year. We are turning 50 years old. So, I just want to take a moment to speak a little bit about the history of the club, and this is our logo for the year. But the beautiful city of Camarillo became incorporated as a city in 1964. Three years later, we had a boys' club. So, just to show the growth of the city and the growth of the Boys and Girls Club has been almost lock and step, you know, give or take, three years. But just to give a real quick summation of the Boys and Girls Club, and we all know Camarillo is a phenomenal place to live. We have great schools, the schools do a very good job. My daughter goes to the school here, and she's very happy. I'm very happy with the school district. And we all know we have a lot of great parents, and those parents, you know, they do everything they can to provide for their kids. And those kids, every day, they go to these great schools, and they go home to very loving and caring parents. However, there's a bit of a gap, because school gets out at 2:00, 3:00. Parents get off work at 5:00, 6:00. Sometimes they live in, or work in different cities than they live. They got to get on that freeway, sometimes the 101 at 5:00 isn't the most friendly place. So, the Boys and Girls Club comes in to bridge that gap. And I really couldn't speak about the history of the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo without speaking about this man right here, Mr. Shigaboo. I've been here in Camarillo since 2011, and I can't tell you how many times individuals have walked into our doors, and they want to shout, they want to share with me about their experience at the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. And they want to talk to me about when they were youngsters, and how they played basketball against Shigaboo, and Shig, you know, schooled them in basketball, and, you know, they never forgot it, but he made them want to be better. Shigaboo was a young man who was actually raised in a Japanese internment camp. And he later on represented our community by carrying the Olympic torch in 1984, when the Olympic Games were here in Los Angeles, or just outside in Los Angeles. Shigaboo was in the Navy, and he was down in San Diego. He volunteered with the Boys and Girls Club out there, got really involved. He taught woodshop, he taught basketball, he taught photography, and at some point, he went on to the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Monica. Now, around this time, there was only around 600 Boys and Girls Clubs in the country. Former President Howard Hoover sat on the National Council of Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and his goal was for it to expand to 1,000 clubs across the country. So, there was a foundation here in Southern California that had put out $3,000 to any community that wanted to start a Boys and Girl, a Boys Club back then. It was not the Boys and Girls Club until much later, so it was a Boys Club. And the city of Camarillo, along with the Optimist Club, they applied, and they started the Boys Club. And there you'll see former Camarillo Mayor Earl Joseph cutting that ribbon. So, we actually got a house donated by a gentleman named Howard Goldenson, and that house was at 2825 Berry Street. And that's what that house looked like. So, there it was in 1967. It doesn't stand there no more, but that's what it looked like. So, the club had its property, they had, you know, obviously a community that needed it. Now, they needed an executive director, so Fred Phipps and Jerry Calhoun, they went out and they met with Mr. Shigaboo, and they brought him out to Camarillo. So, there is Shig right there with, with some of the young members of the club. He's teaching them the game of pool. Actually, the young man shooting the pool stick, I met someone who believes that that is him in that picture. I can't verify that, but, you know, someone who says that that's him. And, you know, Shig did a lot of really cool things with the kids, and the club was really a happening place. So, here's just a couple of pictures of the club from the 50s to the 60s. So, obviously, you can see they did some exercise. They, you know, there's some kids on the speedbag and teaching the music. The club got a lot of community support. It was painted and painted time again by different service clubs, whether it be Rotary, or Optimist, or, or those different groups. Actually, Marge Benchwick and, I'm blanking on the other name, but they donated furniture and couches to the club. And it was a safe haven for a lot of kids in the community. So, here you see some of the different things going on at the Boys and Girls Club, and it was just a great place. And actually, from, from the get-go, they allowed young women there. So, it was a Boys Club, but it was always a Boys and Girls Club. However, the facility itself needed some work. So, when Shig came in, his desk was a cardboard box. His chair was a cardboard box. And, you know, these are actual photos from inside the club. And, you know, the, the kids and Shig, they did everything they could to get by, but they also got by with a little help from their friends. So, some of the early on friends were the Ladies Auxiliary Group, and these were some of the ladies there, and they would do different things to raise funds for the club, as well as the gentleman in the left is Mike Loza, and he was the owner of Alte Colote and a Rotarian. He started the enchilada dinner, which still goes on in our community, Viva la Comida, which still supports the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. And actually, we have, we compete against other Boys and Girls Clubs, and we decided to give ourselves a name, so we are the Camarillo Night Owls. And that is a tribute to Alte Colote and our history here in Camarillo. And then we also had, I believe his name was Winfrey, Bill Winfrey, and he had Winferinos, and they had a pasta night. So, that tradition continues. So, you can see there, back in 1969, kids in the Boys and Girls Club getting involved and doing everything they can to support their home away from home. And Ladies Auxiliary, they went out and they helped the club get a van. And there was a gentleman who owned an auto seller, and they helped out as well. So, they are over off of PCH, climbing that sand hill. And I know, I'm, I'm not old enough to be in that picture, but I remember when I was a kid, a lot of us piled up in vans and the backs of trucks, so I don't know if all of those kids fit in that van that day, but it's definitely a possibility. Things have changed since then. And aside from getting a little help from our friends, Shig and the boys, they helped themselves as well. So, they did community cleanups, and would raise money that way. They did recycling programs. I don't know if you guys have ever seen the movie Sea Biscuit, but Lynn Howard, who owned the horse, he had property out here, and he allowed the kids to go out there and pick fruit, and then they went out and sold it to raise funds to support the club. And then this gentleman, the gentleman sitting down was Manuel Silvery, and, you know, he owned a property up in Cam Heights, and he wanted to donate that property for the club to build a new clubhouse. The location wasn't necessarily the best, because there wasn't a lot of sidewalks in that area, but his vision was, he wanted to give kids a safe place to go, because he had, he was a business owner, and his business had been vandalized in the past. And he knew that if the kids were in the Boys and Girls Club, they wouldn't be out vandalizing his business. So, he, he donated that property to the club, the club sold it, they kept it in the reserves for when they had another opportunity to purchase property. And that, that opportunity came with that man on the left, which is Mr. Joel McCray. And Joel McCray, he owned property out in the Santa Rosa Valley, and he donated five acres to the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. And with that money from Manuel Silvery, they were able to put that money together, and going in with the Camarillo Library and the Recreation and Park District, they purchased that property on the corner of Temple and Ponderosa, even though Temple didn't go all the way through at the time, but on Temple and Ponderosa. And that's where the Boys and Girls Club stands to this day. And here are some pictures of the club being built, and this was around 1975 or so. And then they built the new clubhouse right there on Temple and Ponderosa. So, they were able to stretch out their arms a little bit more, and, you know, the pool continued, but they were able to introduce some new things like homework, and, and, you know, the music continued, but the club programming expanded. And we don't have that shovel anymore, but that is from 1983, because the Boys and Girls Club has grown over the years. And it started off with our games room and our teen center and art room, and as the popularity of the club expanded, so did the facility itself. So, the club expanded in 1983, and they built on the gymnasium, which is now the Joel McCray Gymnasium. And you will actually see towards the right, maybe four people from the right, that is former Mayor Ron McConville, right there in the picture.
Sure is.
And Ken Eastman, who serves on our board to this day. If anybody else is in there, please feel free to shout out.
I used to be in that picture, but not, I was mayor at that time. And I was in that picture, but I'm on the side.
So, here's Shig with the gentleman, Richard Blackthorne, and they're looking at the blueprints and expanding on the facility. And there's some more from the newsletter back then, showing the construction of the club. At the time, there wasn't the cement or the asphalt sidewalk, so there was dirt parking, and that was a bit of a safety concern, so that got addressed. Shigaboo, he left the club at a certain point, and the club welcomed the new director, Jay Grigsby. And as the club continued to grow, and the need for the service continued to expand, the club expanded again. And they built on the auditorium and some back offices. And there is Mr. Grigsby, surrounded by members of the club, back in 1996. And there's a nice image of the games room of the club, you know, from the 90s. So, I would have been old enough to be in that photograph.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, wise guy.
Brag.
So, here's some pictures of the kids there at the club, and, you know, I'll say, we have kids who go onstage, and they perform for their peers, and, and imagine the excitement of that young girl, and she looks out in that audience, and she sees all her classmates and all her friends from her neighborhood. And that stuff is still going on at the Boys and Girls Club today. And then, you know, we introduced the age of technology, and the club introduced new programming in the area of computers, and, and, you know, as we continue to grow and introduce new technology and new programs to the club, we always want to make sure that we're preparing our members for opportunities of not just today, but for the future as well. And here is my predecessor with some of our board members, when we had our van wrapped, and, you know, they're, they're taking some nice pictures of the kids. So, this is around 2000s. And this is us today. So, continuing to do what we did back in 1967, which is serve the youth in the community of Camarillo. So, you know, there's a lot of different things going on in these pictures, but basically what it all is, is kids getting off, when their parents are still working, having a good time, and learning new skills and gaining confidence. So, we have been fortunate to have a number of great alumni, and two of them are featured here. We have Ed Matic, who is the most winningest coach in D2 basketball. He is the coach at Fresno City College. As well as on the right, we have Jessica Mendoza, who, if you were watching the game on Sunday night on ESPN, I think it was the Mets and Phillies, I think, I'm not sure, but she was broadcasting, first woman broadcasting on MLB on ESPN. She is a gold medal and a silver medalist, and she actually broke her first bone at the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. I'm a little proud of that. So, 1967, all the way through the 90s, all the way to today, Boys and Girls Club has been very proud to continue to serve the city of Camarillo and the residents of Camarillo. And I thank the city for all your support over the years, and for supporting the kids and allowing us to do what we do. So, just a little bit of us by the numbers. Our facility is 33,000 square feet. We are at 1,258 registered members. 53% of them are male, 47% are female. We officially became Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo in 1982, but we've been welcoming girls since, since day one. Our average daily attendance is 385, but that's actually a little bit misguided, because we serve so many different school districts. We have PVSD, as well as the charter schools, so they have different days of operations. So, that actually drops our numbers. We're actually around closer to 400 a day. And during the summer, we welcome around 170 kids, 175 kids to our program, 51, 51% of which are eligible for free or reduced lunch, so we really are, you know, Godsend to a lot of these families. And 36% are from single parent households. And in addition to that, we help people gain 1,800 volunteer hours. So, that's youth, and that's adults, and a lot of different people who come in, and they get involved in their community, and they get involved by supporting the Boys and Girls Club. So, I would not be doing my job if I did not bring up that we have a gala coming up this Saturday, and we want to highlight the club's 50 years here in Camarillo, and it's going to be a great event. We got some, some great live inside auction items, but most importantly, it supports the great cause. So, I'm just very happy to do that with the city. And we want to welcome everyone to our club for an open house on Saturday, June 3rd, and let everyone come and see what we have going on in the club. I showed, I shared a few photographs today, but Shigaboo was kind of the official photographer for Boys and Girls Club back in the day. And so, we are fortunate that we have archives on top of archives of great photographs, and I'm sure many of us in this room might find ourselves in a photograph or two from the archives of the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo. So, I'd like to thank you for your time today, and thank you for all the support the city gives us.
Thank you. Can you, moment, in case we have questions?
Yeah, don't leave. Are there still tickets available for the gala?
Yes.
Oh, that's a yes. And also, because I was going to be out of town, but I'm not now.
And if you're not able to attend, we also take a donation in lieu of your attendance.
The other thing is that I am so glad this year you brought Shigaboo back, because I worked with him when I was in college at the old building, shooting baskets with the kids, and so on. Went away to school, came back, and my wife and I became involved, and she was part of the weekly, weekly, monthly, I forgot, bingo, which was huge. Whole place was packed.
Weekly.
Yeah, it was weekly, and it's packed, and you made a lot of money that way. And I worked with the board then, but, you know, we were involved in the very beginning, and I really see what you've done, and it's fantastic for the city and the kids.
Well, I'm just very fortunate that I've had the chances to sit down and talk with Shig, and learn some of the history of the club. You know, I've been with Boys and Girls Club 14 years, you know, and more than half of that was outside of Camarillo. And every club has its own history. And, you know, and, and every club's history is important, because it's a, it's a piece of history of that community, and for hundreds of kids, for who the club is a big part of their lives. And like I said, since I got here in 2011, I can't tell you how many people have walked into our doors, and, you know, they might say, you know, I grew up out here, now I live out in wherever, and, oh, I can't tell you everything that we used to do here. Is Shigaboo still around? And a lot of them, they come back to Shig.
Don't try to outshoot him with basketball, because you won't.
I won't shoot, I won't outshoot many in basketball, so.
Should we have any other questions? Couldn't you take just a moment and tell them a little bit about what you do in helping the kids with their homework, and I think it's such an important piece of what you do there.
So, I think a lot of us have had that experience of getting off work late in the evening, and going home, and sometimes you got to make a stop by the store, and you realize that, you know, you get home at a certain hour, and there's still dinner, and there's still laundry, and there's still dishes, and kids got to take a shower. And sometimes that window for getting homework done just gets smaller and smaller. So, we want to be there to support our families and support the parents, so we make sure that homework gets done at the club Monday through Friday. And that way, when the kids get picked up at the club, they've had a chance to get their homework done, they've had an opportunity to take part in different activities that they might otherwise not have the chance to. And when they get home, all the parents got to do is sit down at the dinner table and connect as a family, and talk about how their day was, and not have that argument of, why isn't your homework done? Oh, my goodness, what time is it? Have you, have you showered yet? Oh, you know, we got to get your lunch ready. You know, we want to take that pressure off the families, and build stronger families and build stronger communities. So, we make sure everyone gets their homework done. We also have some supplementary education programs for those kids who need extra attention. Some of those outside of the club would be available for around $2,000 per child. At the club, they're free and available to the clubs with their membership. So, you know, those are some of the ways that we're able to support the families, and for those kids who don't have homework or finish their homework, then we have other programs that they can get involved with that are more along the lines of enrichment.
Very good.
Great program.
Since this is introducing maybe some people who don't know about the Boys and Girls Club, and we do have a TV audience, tell a little bit about how little money it costs to join and become a member of the Boys and Girls Club.
So, the Boys and Girls Club of Camarillo, we recently raised our fees to a whopping $100 a year for membership, so around $8.33 a month for the first child, 60 for the second, 30 for the third, if, if, if your family extends that far. And, you know, we're always willing to work with any family, and making sure that, you know, financial burden is no reason that a child would not be a member of the Boys and Girls Club. So, we have financial aid available and scholarships, you know, for, for families who need additional support. On the other side, it costs us around $550 a year to serve a child, and that comes with their after-school programming, as well as summer providing free and nutritious meals to the children every day.
When, when I was a kid in Texas, as part of the Boys and Girls Club, same thing. If you didn't have the money, they found it for you. It was great.
It's a great place to be for kids who need it and enjoy it, so it's not just the need out there. There are an awful lot of kids that go there, because that's just the place to be.
It's an exciting place at 33. It's an exciting place at 3/30.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it is.
Packed.
Thank you so much, and congra... Oh, absolutely.
Did he still have that bicycle program there?
The bicycle shop.
Yes, uh, through the support of the city of Camarillo, we were able to introduce a bike, uh, repair program to the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, it's a, it's a fully functional bike repair shop, where kids can come in and, and they can be introduced to early-on engineering, and, and they can work with tools and work with their hands. So if they put in enough time in the bike shop, they can actually earn a bike for free. Or if they have a bike that's sitting on the side of the garage, and for whatever reason it's, it's inoperable, the chain is busted off, they can bring it in and, and work on it themselves, get that, that sense of pride and ownership in what they've done, and be out riding again.
Great.
Cool, huh?
Pretty cool.
Well, thank you for coming and sharing that with us, and congratulations to you and the Boys and Girls Club, and all the members that have come through the years and those to come in the future, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. That sets a nice tone for everything else we do tonight. So from now, we go on to public comments. I do have some speaker sheets. I noticed that, um, we have a, a little stack here, not quite as many as last time, on the desalter. So I'm wondering if Mr. Fox, if you can just give the council and the audience an update on where we are in our process, and then that might help in answering some of the questions as we get to our speakers.
Uh, yes, Your Honor. At the last council meeting, your direction was to, uh, go back and look at the alternative sites and deal with the various agencies that we have to deal with, to see if there is any movement we can, eh, find on, on, on finding an alternative site. So we've been working on that. Uh, there are a lot of agencies involved, so it takes a while for, to get us answers back on everything. But at this point, uh, we're cautiously optimistic that we may be able to work out a deal to, to find a, another site. Uh, we have to wait for some answers back before we can know for sure if that's coming together. Uh, we hope in the next two weeks that, uh, we'll get those answers, and by the middle of May, uh, hopefully have some good news to be able to report, uh, to the community and, and then, uh, reach out to the community with that information. Uh, again, I, um, don't have a presentation ready to go into any detail, but I just want to say that, um, we are diligently working on trying to find an alternative site, and again, are cautiously optimistic that we might be able to do that.
Great, thank you. Okay, we do have a few speaker sheets. I think all of you have been here, but just before, but just in case you haven't, um, you have three minutes. There's a clock that, um, you can see, there's one that I can see. It ticks down. When you get to a minute, it turns yellow and lets you know that you have a minute to wrap things up. We ask that you give your name for the record as you start. We do in the, um, ask, and kind of the rules of the house is that we don't have booing and, and shouting and, and applause. That way, everyone's comfortable to talk. You don't have to worry about people agreeing or disagreeing. We want everyone to be able to have their say. And I will, um, we have, well, obviously, we speak one at a time, but I'll always give this, I'll give the second one in, in line, so you're ready to go. So our first speaker will be Roy Sakamoto, and then Jane Murphy.
Uh, my name's Roy Sakamoto, and I represent some of the House, uh, residents at the Country Lane Association and also Vista Camarillo. Uh, in front of you, hopefully, you should have all these documents. Um, there's a large sheet that contains, uh, that has the drawings of the facility. Now, all of the documentation I'm providing is really extracted from the, uh, final supplemental environmental impact report, so, you know, this is all factual. Uh, looking at the first drawing...
You got to pull that mic right up to you.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Now, looking at the first drawing, the large drawing in front of you, that's the current layout, as proposed in the EIR. Uh, as you can see in red, there are several large tanks, one being as large as a 100,000-gallon tank, which in my estimate, using a 20-feet-high height, it's going to be 20-feet-high by 20-feet by 37-feet-long. That's just one tank. There's three additional tanks, another 100,000, and two others 90,000-gallon tanks, so they're fairly large tanks. In addition to that, comments on the side that I've noted, uh, there are approximately 27,000 gallons of chemicals being stored on-site. That's about a 30-day supply. And in addition to that, of that, 13,000 gallons of sulfuric acid, which is highly corrosive. Going on to the next page, um, are the original eight sites that were in the older study. Uh, I'd like to raise your attention to Site 2, and also to Site 5 and Site 7. And then going on to the following, uh, page, is the current, uh, what they're calling the Proposed Action Facility, which is Site 2. And as you can see in that hash mark, that, uh, location is close, right across the street from St. John's Hospital, effectively. And our tract, the Country Lane tract, is just southeast of it, or just bottom to the right a little bit. That L-shaped tract is where we live. And then up in the left corner, uh, is the Vista Camarillo housing, so it's fairly close to housing tracts. Now, if you look at the blue, um, lines, those are actually the well lines that tie all the wells and feed that desalter plant. So those lines are fairly long, the pipeline's fairly long. Uh, in addition to that, if you look at the black line, those are the brine lines. Um, going to the following page, I propose that the council consider purchasing, uh, the old LA Workout site that's in that red triangle towards the bottom right. Uh, and in addition to that, then, then acquire some of the smaller portion of land, probably about a 2.5-acre lot. Um, and then, effectively, if you look at the pipelines that I'm running, it's effectively even shorter than what, uh, is in the other, uh, proposal. And this site is close to the brine, it's close to that new well. The other location I'm looking at is Site 7, but I'll skip that, because I don't have enough time. Now, going on to the, uh, next page is the concerns on desalter. My biggest concern really has to do with the sulfuric acid, the mono, uh, sulfuric acid is being stored. And in addition to that, the location of where it's being situated, next to the hospital. If for some reason there's a major spill, and the hospital has to evacuate for safety purposes, then where do everybody else go for emergency purposes? So that's a big concern that I have. And then, of course, there's the tanks, you know, these tanks are huge, and if there's major spills, I don't know how they're going to address those. And of course, there's another canopy. On the second page, there's a canopy about 5,000 square feet, in my estimate, at 25-feet-long, uh, 25-feet-wide. That'll be about 200-feet-long, so it's a fairly large canopy. And then, I'll skip the rest, but then going on to the last, um, set of documents, you know, I make my case for Site 5, for the modified Site 5, because I think it's more cost-effective for the city to acquire that site. Um, you know, that property's been vacant, the LA Workout site has been vacant for over 10 years now. Uh, I drove by it just the other day. The ceiling's in disarray, the, the walls are all scratched out, it looks like the fence is now leaning over into the farmland, so it's in fairly bad shape. So I think the city could get a pretty good deal on it. But they've already done the study on Site 5. I'm just talking about acquiring a smaller portion of it. So I think, you know, there's not going to be a whole lot of additional studies being required, other than acquiring that property. And again, it's adjacent to, that, although that property, that farmland is in county property, it's adjacent to city property. So, um, that's about all I have for now. I'll just address the, the rest of it is in this documentation, so I'll keep my time short. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. You've done a lot of work here, and we will, we will look at it. So it was, um, our next speaker is Jane Murphy, and then Phil Hamilton.
Hi, I hope, can you hear me? Okay? I couldn't hear.
Sorry. Got to get that mic right up there.
Um, hi, Jane Murphy. I, I live in Vista Camarillo, 2713 Antonio, and I am dumbfounded by this. High density, tons of people, hundreds of people, thousands of people in this vicinity. A lot of people, children, babies, moms and dads out walking their kids. Uh, I don't know. The high density just amazes me. The sulfuric acid terrifies me. Um, you know, huge containers, uh, dramatic increase in trucks, traffic. There's got to be a better location. Got to be. There is so much land in Camarillo that this is just a preposterous site. Just absolutely, you have to be mentally retarded to pick this area. I mean, we, we are looking at a, a $50-million debacle, as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, you know, this, this is a chemical cocktail, uh, right in the orchard, right across from Vista Camarillo. Hundreds of, of Camarillo residents, and beyond us, more people. This is just not a good site. This has to be looked at again, and has to be re-investigated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Phil Hamilton, and actually, that is the only, uh, speaker sheet I have for the desalter.
Um, I don't really have a lot to say tonight. I just wanted to say that you can see that the Vista Camarillo people were a little late coming on board, so they're voicing some of the same concerns that, uh, Country Lane voiced earlier. But, um, so, all I wanted to say was, tonight, was I just want to say thanks to the council and the staff for kind of tapping on the brakes and apparently, um, getting on a different track really, really quickly. Really responsive, and we really appreciate the efforts. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have two, um, nonverbal comment cards that I will pass down so that the council can read them, and we appreciate you all coming on this, and as, um, Mr. Fox said, um, you'll be hearing more about it in the future. They're working on it. One more speaker sheet, uh, that is Matthew Lormer.
Good evening, City Council. I have, uh, three comments tonight. You know, one of them, I've been coming to City Council a long time. Last City Council meeting, we had people talk about the desalter plant and the Kmart site. They have something in common. Maybe you would like to know what that is. The notification is 300 feet. That's right, 300 feet. I think it should be a mile. I think it's time that we have an overhaul of the system. Several people have expressed that they're not being notified. Remember, your model of the city is the people are the city. So if you have nothing to hide, maybe you ought to look at your policy. Not one of you asked that policy, and it should be overhauled. 300 feet is ridiculous. People should be not kept in the limelight. It doesn't matter what the project is, whether you like it, they don't like it, everybody should have an opportunity. So that needs an overhaul, and I hope you'll look at it. Thank you. The next thing I want to talk about, Lamp Lighter Mobile Home Park. As a president, I came in here, it's a public nuisance since, since December 1st, 2016, that pool's been torn up. I've asked owners, and now they're saying 2018, March. Every time you talk to these people, there's no answer. There's 500 people there. I gave you something, they're in violation of the mobile home residency law. I gave the city attorney some, all of you, I haven't heard a dime from it, okay? It's a public nuisance. I want to know what you're going to do about it, and I'd like a phone call. That would be nice, once in a while, to get a phone call, when people come here and speak, or get a something from the city. You are a public agency, right? You should answer some people, even if you don't like them. The next thing, crime. Thirty-three percent. You know something? Two years in a row, the former mayor, Mr. Morgan, said it's not as bad as it appears if four people commit the same crime, or they commit multiple crimes. You know something? You need more resources. You, your answers haven't worked. You sit here, you listen to it, and you come up with no solutions. We need a bike patrol. I said you should look into it. Why not have an open mind? Another thing, why don't you put a quarter of a million dollars and start offering funds for people to turn people in? You haven't come up with any ideas. The police chief, you have 54 officers, adding another one isn't going to make a difference. You know something? When somebody's raped, or hurt, or violently assaulted, you should be as passionate as you were when you were talking about being on a nonprofit. Where is your passion? That is the point. I'm not here to beat you up. I'm here to tell you, you need to do more. When I come up here and say violent crime is up 33%, and it's up again, I want to see more. How about you guys attending a meeting with the police chief once a month? How about taking some community ideas? This is your community. You've lived, I've been here 20 years, you've been here almost 80 years, some of you. I know Tony's new, but you know something? Crime is unacceptable. You don't wait till it happens to you or your family member before you act. That's what happens in this country. What we need is a heavy response, and I hope you'll consider that. And it's not a personal attack on you, it's about the security of your citizens. I've seen a lot of things go wrong lately in this community, and it's about time you guys put some more resources.
Thank you, Mr. Lormer.
Thank you.
I've just got to say one thing. I'm sorry. Last year, we had three murder-suicides of spouses. Those are almost impossible to prevent. Spousal battery is something else that was up. That is something that is very dangerous for police officers to go into that situation. It's very difficult to prevent. Uh, our police officers do go in, but it's, it's almost impossible to prevent.
Your Honor, one more thing.
She did, I, I just want to say something, and we're not going to stay much longer, and I know you've had your say when you were mayor. Um, I just have to say that the position that the City Council takes is, we give the resources we need, that need to be given to our police department, who are the professionals. We leave it up to them to make, decide whether they need a bike patrol, what they need with those resources. And I know each council member sitting here is committed to giving our police department the resources they need to keep the city safe, and it's up to them, the professionals, to decide how to use it. And that's something we've always done, and that's something that we continue to do, and we're in constant contact with our police chief. He sits as one of our department heads, he meets constantly with our city staff, and he's here with us in all of our decisions that we make, from the budget to how we operate in this city. So to make it sound like we don't communicate with our police department and don't give them what they need is absolutely untrue. With that, I need to also ask Mr. Vaca, will you give us an update on the pool?
Yes, so, um, we have verified that permits have been obtained and work is underway.
Can you speak right into that?
Yes, building permits have been obtained and work is underway.
Thank you very much. So the city did its job. With that, um, I do not have any other speaker sheets. Would anyone else want to address the, um, council at this point in time? Okay, thank you very much for coming, everyone, and we move on to, um, public hearings. We do have one this evening. It is a resolution determining assessment for city's cost for compliance with municipal stormwater NPDES management permit.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was going to introduce Anita Coleman, our Stormwater Program Manager, will, uh, uh, cover this topic.
Great, thank you. Uh, yes, Anita Coleman, City of Camarillo Stormwater Program Manager. Uh, the item before you is a resolution requesting that the County Board of Supervisors continue to levy the $5 assessment unit for the benefit assessments for fiscal year 2017-18. Uh, the BAUs are about the same this coming year as they are now, which is about 30,800 benefit assessment units, and it will bring in about $155,000 in revenue for next year. This assessment is used to partially fund compliance with the city's municipal stormwater permit. We are currently two years into an expired permit. Our third-term permit expired July of 2015, but we are hopeful to receive our fourth-term permit possibly in June, July, with adoption next fiscal year. So again, this resolution is a request to the County Board of Supervisors to continue to levy the assessment of $5 per benefit assessment unit for next year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Mrs. Craven.
As you said, how much we get, just for the benefit of anybody listening, how much do we spend on this a year?
The current stormwater program budget is about $1.4 million.
Thank you.
And that's basically to implement our stormwater permit with the state.
So this just funds a very small part of it?
Exactly, yes.
A little drop in the bucket, so to speak.
Mr. Kilde.
A bunch of trash.
Anita, since I've been up here, it's been about the $5 assessment, and the reason why it can't be increased is because, is that a Prop. 218 situation?
It was frozen by the Proposition 218. And back then, that was enough, 1994.
I was going to ask you, when did that?
It was enough to fund the program, of course. Then it was frozen, so if we went out for a vote, we could possibly increase it.
So, basically, it's been frozen for 20, what, 22 years? What are we talking here about?
Three.
About 94, 95?
And it pays for about, what, 10% of the total cost? Is that about right?
Roughly, yes, right now, under the current permit.
So, for us to even consider raising that, we'd have to go out for a vote of all the people, is that correct?
Correct. And the county-wide, because we are part of the county-wide permit, the program does look into possible funding sources, and with this coming fourth-term permit, we're definitely looking harder into opportunities for that. But it would be either a property-related fee, possibly not touching the current assessment, but it would be another property-related fee that would take a vote.
Would that, now, would that be a two-thirds, or would that just be a simple majority?
It would be, it could be a mail-in ballot vote with 50 plus one to pass of the ballots received.
I'm not recommending we do it, I just think it's kind of interesting that it's been frozen for some 20-odd years, so. As cost, I'm sure every year keeps going up, is that correct?
Yes, they have.
Anybody down here? Mr. Trimbley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I've had the, I guess, good fortune, I would say, to have done in my professional life a fair amount of stormwater-related work, and it, I think most folks don't really understand the regulatory rigor and the compliance costs associated with it. Mr. Kilde, I'm glad that you asked about the fee and what it actually funds. It funds somewhere around 10% of what the city's compliance costs are, but could you give us an idea what those future compliance costs may be in terms of capital investment? Because I think most citizens, not because it's their fault, really don't know what we anticipate, what the city anticipates those are going to be five, 10, and 20 years into the future. They're going to be extraordinarily high.
That's a good question. The current permit, and actually permits prior to that, we have what we call total maximum daily loads. We have water quality objectives. Our water body is impaired for pollutants, and we have a deadline for those. The deadlines are coming for final compliance with those. I think 2040 will be the final deadline to meet, or to remove those pollutants from our water bodies. It'll take capital improvements. The big one is bacteria. And basically, the only way to remove bacteria is to infiltrate it or retain it. So you will need capital improvements to make that happen. And with this next term permit, you're going to see more of a watershed management plan that will address how we're going to get to that final deadline for compliance and the cost for that. So that's why I mentioned the funding. It's not just in Ventura County, statewide, this is happening, and people are looking at funding sources for that.
Yeah, I think that's a very, that's a very relevant comment, and from a planning-level costing standpoint, over the course of the next several years, particularly with regard to the city's CIP, my understanding is, these costs are going to escalate significantly, and we are going to, the city is going to be spending millions of dollars in compliance with the way, with the way things are currently set forth and proceeding, right?
Correct, right.
I just want to make sure that I put that into context, because it's important, I think, for people to realize, you know, with this assessment fee, I'm just like everybody else, I, you know, we don't like paying fees, right? But we have to put it in context as to what the mandates are on the city. This is not something that the city discretionarily can do. It must comply with it.
Correct. It's a statement.
Thank you.
I have a question. Because we're going to have to do this, that's just what it is. But when you have normal rain, we have a few washers that go down the drain and wash everything out, basically. That helps our bacteria count when the streams get flushed, you know, by a lot of water and the rolling water we see, do they not?
It depends on what the storm's washing out from the storm drain inlets, if there's a lot of debris that's been growing in there. That's where we get a lot of bacteria hits. I know our urban outfall station is over by the old, by Steve Thomas and that channel.
Right.
And we're hitting 10, 10,000s to 100,000s, when the limit is in the hundreds. And that's part of the problem, the regulatory limit that they've set for bacteria.
We've been sitting five years on a drought, and it's all sitting there growing. And I'm just wondering if a few seasons, like we just had, can help reduce some of that, curiosity.
It's possible. But the monitoring results, and I'd be happy to share that at a future meeting, aren't showing that. We're still having pretty large hits for bacteria.
All right. Any other questions?
I will move the approval.
Oh, this is a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, Anita. So this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker sheets on this item. Would anyone in the audience like to address the council on this particular item? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing.
Now I'll move the approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously. Thank you. Let's go back and pick up the items we skipped over. So we go back, I believe the first would be finance, correct? Yes. Under finance, we have the debt management policy.
Mayor, members of the City Council. You have before you tonight a new policy, as required by government code, related to debt. Currently, the city has three policies related to issuing debt. Land secured financing, policy 3.07. Continuing bond disclosures, policy number 3.11. And post issuance compliance with federal tax requirements applicable to tax-exempt bonds, policy number 3.12. However, a new government code requirements mandate that we adopt a debt management policy. This policy provides guidance in the issuance and management of debt by the city or its related entities, and is intended to comply with Government Code Section 8855, which was effective on January 1st, 2017. The policy includes purposes for which debt may be issued, the types of debt, the relationship of debt to capital improvement program and budget, policy goals related to planning goals and objectives, internal control procedures, initial disclosure, credit quality, method of issuance, and relationship to other policies. This new debt management policy is comprehensive to include the required government code criteria. It was drafted by the city bond attorney, Mary Ann Goodkind. It was reviewed by the city's financial advisor, Kurt Decrenis, and it was reviewed by the city attorney and city staff. Additionally, the policy committee met to review and discuss the policy on April 25th, yesterday, and provided staff with some input and revisions to the policy that has been provided to you today in your red folder. Some of the committee input included the removal of language already referenced regarding the useful life of project and debt maturity. Essentially, it was duplicative areas in the policy that addressed this issue, so staff, for simplicity, removed one of the references. This policy update also was the removal of the pension bond reference as a type of debt. Essentially, the committee requested that pension bond debt as a type of debt was removed from the policy, which it initially included. The committee also recommended the removal of language related to derivatives. That was on page seven. The final section in the policy is initially drafted, included a section for waiver of debt of the debt policy. The committee asked that that section be removed as well. And there were also some minor revisions to the wording, to wording changes for clarification throughout the policy. So, red-line version was provided to the council to include these committee recommendations, as discussed yesterday's, yesterday's policy committee meeting. So, the policy before you includes, and the staff report includes a recommendation for a motion to adopt the debt management policy that sets parameters for issuing debt, managing the city's debt portfolio, and provides guidance to decision-makers. With that, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, do we have questions?
I have a question.
If you didn't, Mr. Trimbley, I'd be really surprised.
I think Mr. Kilde addresses his.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jeannie, with the potential passing of this, will this get us into compliance with what the state is asking us to do, essentially?
Yes, the state's asked us to adopt this policy and have it in place 30 days prior to any new issuance or refunding of debt.
And what's, is it time-sensitive to have this in place? Do they give us a time?
Yes, our time sensitivity is that we did initiate the refunding process for CFD-1, and we have an estimated closing date of that refunding for early June. So, this policy needs to be in effect 30 days prior to that closing date.
Okay, thank you. Delia.
Thank you. Mr. Trimbley.
I do have some questions, thanks, Madam Mayor, but, but, good to point out, though, that I think when the council approved that, that particular transaction, we estimated the net present savings at around 3.5% if I'm correct.
Correct.
But with the way the market is going, you know, do I have some wood to knock on? We may actually achieve some more additional things on top of that.
It's possible. The last conference call we had with the financing team indicated that the rates had actually improved. Again, we are looking at a bid on this refunding in the early part of May, so we'll see where the rates are at that point in time.
Right, and it takes, it increases, it provides savings, plus takes the burden off of the property owners.
For some disclosure requirements.
Disclosure obligations relative to their property, right. I really want to compliment the policy committee, Madam Mayor and Mrs. Craven, for your work on this and all the revisions. I know that we're dealing with some red-lined revisions that came in in just the last couple of days. I do want to talk about a couple of things, if I can, and ask a couple of questions. And I think folks who are trying to follow this on television, it may be a little difficult, because I don't know if, was the red-line version promulgated on the website? Oh, great, okay, good.
So you're looking at red-line version?
I'm going to go with red-line version, yeah. Although, the first question I have is not, not, not redlined. It has to do with page two of 10. It's on the red-line version, Roman 5A2, and it's under long-term debt. And there are four criteria for when long-term debt financings are appropriate, and I think all of those criteria are appropriate, but I just want to spend a minute and talk about criteria number three. Because criteria number three says that long-term debt financings are appropriate when the following conditions exist. Number three, when total debt does not constitute an unreasonable burden to the city and its taxpayers and ratepayers. And that, in my view, is an extremely important piece of language. The difficulty is trying to put bookends on what an unreasonable burden may be, and one person's unreasonable burden may not be another's. And I don't know that you want to put any kind of bookends on it, because you need to have some flexibility, right, depending, right, depending on circumstances, but with, and I'm not advocating any, but with that in mind, I just wanted to ask a little bit about, about, on a go-forward basis, you know, how do we ensure that any long-term debt would not be unreasonable? And I know that there are some standards, Ms. Wilson, there are some common practices that are done that I wanted to ask you about. And, you know, one of them, one of them is when, if you have an assessment or a mellow roos tax that's added to the property bills, it's, isn't it true, it's generally accepted that the combined tax rate, you know, the 1% ad valorem, or up to 1.25, plus all the other assessments and taxes of the local agency, shouldn't, it should be, it shouldn't exceed 2%, and it should be somewhere between 1.5% and 2%? Is that, is that kind of a general bookend that we might be able to utilize on a go-forward basis to decide whether something is reasonable or unreasonable?
That's reasonable, yes.
And of course, we wouldn't want, you know, in that sense, too, we wouldn't want general fund debt that significantly lowers the city's reserves, preferred reserves. That's, that's not advisable, either.
That's correct.
That's kind of like throwing the baby out with the bathwater, in a way. Okay, on to the red line, real quick, and I'll speed through the rest of this, I promise.
That's all right. Just tell us, little, big numbers, or big numbers?
Page three of 10, big numbers, yeah, 5A3, up at the top, under, under Section C, as in Charlie. It says, "The city may use long-term debt financing subject to the following conditions." And the paragraph on the weighted average maturity of the debt has been stricken. Can you just provide the rationale for that?
Yes, the reference to the, the useful life of the project will equal or exceed the term of the financing is actually already referenced in, on page two of 10 in Section B, that first paragraph, that essentially makes the same statement. So this, the paragraph that was stricken is a little more technical, per IRS code, and, which we're required to comply with, so was deemed unnecessary.
Can you kind of vector me in where that statement is made?
So the statement is page two of 10, Section B. "The city will consider the use of debt financing primarily for capital improvement projects when the project's useful life will equal or exceed the term of the financing."
Right.
So it was actually more restricted in this one, and they, they kind of, they didn't agree with each other.
They didn't necessarily mesh, did they?
Right, but the other one is more conservative, which is what we are.
And that's the point that I was going to make. In a minute. I mean, it is more conservative standard.
Right.
In my mind, so that's, that's a, that's a good thing. I really perked up my ears on, and my eyes, page four of 10, 5A4, with now the declarative statement that the city is not going to employ derivatives such as interest rate swaps. And as far as I'm concerned, that's just great.
The city hasn't done that since about 1987.
Exactly. We got, and I was in town when that happened, so.
Mike and I were up here when that happened.
So I want to, I want to applaud, I want to applaud the policy committee for.
And we remember the citizens' comments when that happened.
We said, "No more derivatives, period." Kudos, kudos are deserved. Two other quick things. On page nine of 10, 5A9, at the top, under number five, it's just above the credit quality paragraph, and this deals with preliminary official statements, or I may lapse for a minute and just call them POSs on the initial disclosure. When those come to council for review, they will include the form of management discussion and analysis that you would ordinarily find in a, in a, in a final POS, right? It may be called something else.
I think it's called something else. The MDAs, I think you're referring to, is generally part of a CAF or Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Right, I can't remember what it's, I can't remember what the exact phrase is, but it's comparable to a management. I just want to make sure that, that before that POS hits the street, council will have the ability to review that discussion and analysis, because it's critically important relative to secured financing. And we're on the hook for that. So I want to make sure that, 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 that happens. And the way I read this is, that's going to happen.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's why you're here, we review everything.
Okay. Believe it or not, that concludes my questions.
Wow. I shouldn't act so surprised, sorry. Mr. Morgan, do you have anything?
No.
Any questions?
I approve what they did.
Any down here? Okay. Well, thank you very much, and if there's no other discussion, is there a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we adopt a debt manage, management policy that sets parameters for issuing debt, managing the city's debt portfolio, and provides guidance to the decision-makers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously.
Now, where are we?
I lost my agenda here. Give me a second. What did I do with it? I filed it away with the debt policy. The next item is under the city manager. This is the Citizens Advisory Committee on Land Use, the disbandment of that committee.
Thank you very much. The original Citizens Advisory Committee was appointed by the City Council in February of 1996 for the purpose of adopting and implementing the city's proposed redevelopment plan. The advisory committee, or advisory or redevelopment project area committees were common when you did have redevelopment area projects. And that's because those plans, those advisory committees were typically made up of people who owned property or residences within the redevelopment project area. And the reason why that was important, to have people who are invested in that community on that committee, is because in many redevelopment agencies, eminent domain was a tool that could be used by the city. And whenever that became a reality in someone's life, they wanted to make sure that they had a say in how that was going to be used, so they weren't, you know, unknowingly displaced in the, in the redevelopment of the area. Well, this committee was appointed for redevelopment purposes originally. It had 25 members, and the number of those members had not changed over time since 1996. Well, in June 2011, the state legislature abolished redevelopment agencies, which also abolished the redevelopment functions of the committee. So it kind of left us with a decision about what to do with the committee at the time, and we felt that, the council felt at the time. Staff came back after all the smoke cleared on redevelopment and came back in May 2013 to recommend that the council amend the purposes of the committee and change the committee to the Citizen Advisory Committee on Land Use and broaden its purposes to include review of general plan elements, specific plans, and those things on a referral basis. However, in April 2014, we came back again and further amended it to try to give the committee some more purpose, to add beautification projects and programs and projects of the former RDA. Well, over time, since 2013, we came to find out that unlike redevelopment agencies, the update of general plan amendments really only happen about once every 10 years. There's just not a lot of activity going on, and it's really hard to keep a committee of 25 people at bay waiting for something to happen every once in a while.
And asking, "When are we gonna meet?"
Yeah, exactly. So, but in the meantime, the City Council, at its last goal session, renewed its, and put some more meat on the bones of its community relations goal and increased emphasis on community engagement. And so now, when we're talking about engaging the community in things like, you know, public forums and charrettes on these large policy issues, 25 people appointed for that purpose seems rather limiting. So, given the lack of meetings and council's community relations goals, staff proposes disbanding the CACLU in favor of community participation through the use of public forums and charrettes and the use of electronic public opinion platforms. If council wants to get a formal recommendation for a specific purpose, it can always appoint an ad hoc committee for that purpose, and then people are engaged for that purpose. They know what they're supposed to do, they do it, and then they're done. So our recommendation is that you disband the CACLU and move forward with the objectives of your community relations goal.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
I agree wholeheartedly.
I agree. I do too. It's time.
I agree as well. There are an awful lot of very talented people in our community, particularly with respect to land use issues. On the other hand, I don't want to have a committee that has nothing to do. I think the most important part of what I've heard and what's in the staff report is that is this council's increased emphasis on direct city involvement and engagement, and maybe, as Mr. Norman said, putting more meat on the bones through outreach, through public forums, through charrettes. And I am so glad that we are getting there, and it's coming. So I'm happy to support this.
Right. Thank you. I want to, I agree that, I want to make it perfectly clear, this doesn't mean we don't want input, we're just going to go about it in perhaps even a better way, so.
And just to make sure everybody understands, it was a committee, and they hadn't met in a couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
You could get appointed and then get off of it.
Frustrating.
My neighbor is one of those. He says, "Mike, I knew you weren't going to do anything anymore. We haven't been called in so long."
I would move.
Exactly.
That's right. We'll just do it a different way.
Move the approval of this item.
The motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And that does pass unanimous, and we obviously thank those who had participated in the past and look forward to them participating in another method. I believe we are done, except we have one closed session item to attend to, and we need to do informational items. Mr. City Manager, anything to?
Yes, our Finance Director has an announcement.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the City Council, we received notification this week that the city has received a, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the CAFR. The city has a long history of receiving this award, and so I wanted to acknowledge the finance team and the finance staff that worked on it. In particular, Ma Jue, she's our county manager, who made sure that the CAFR was properly reviewed on time and submitted to GFOA with the required criteria.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Much, congratulations.
Very good. Yeah.
And it's something we've been proud of for many years, and it's nice to see the tradition is carrying on, the good work is carrying on.
Has a lot of good information in it.
Well, it's my favorite, I always tell you, it's my favorite document, because it tells you everything about, everything that happens in the city comes out of that book.
Your Honor, to make it sure.
Everything we have in the city.
The public does know, not every city gets this kind of treatment every year. And so we're, we've got great staff that help keep us going.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, I have one more thing. I really wanted to bring the community up to date on our discussions with St. Mary Magdalene School on the purchase of the former fire station. As you know, we've been in discussions with St. Mary Magdalene for some time, and we are pleased to report that we have come to basic terms with them. We have initiated the appraisal of the property, and so that is, that is off and running. We still need to flesh out a term sheet to open up escrow, and we have some environmental work through the California Environmental Quality Act, because we are talking about a building of some age. But things are progressing quite well, and, you know, communication is flowing. You know, it's interesting working with large institutions like the Archdiocese of Los Angeles. They obviously have a lot of things on their plate, and we are just one small piece of their big pie. And so communication, although we communicate wonderfully with the local church, and, you know, things can happen very quickly there, things tend to slow down once it gets past that point and up to the Archdiocese. But when we have met with them, they've been very cooperative and very understanding, and they've been fully engaged.
Very diplomatic there, Dave.
Thank you very much. Anything else from staff? Mr. City Attorney?
Oh, I have no items tonight.
Thank you. I think I started that in this week, or two weeks ago. Let's start with Mr. Tremblay.
Oh, gosh, I'm up to the plate already.
Do you want me to?
No, no. Oh, no, no, that's okay. Let's see, reports on meetings attended, I think would be appropriate at this time. On April 13, I attended the Airport Authority meeting together with Mr. Morgan. On April 20, an EDC VC meeting. On April 21, with Mrs. Craven, the Citizen Appointment Committee. And just today, with Mr. Kildee, we had two committee meetings this afternoon, not just one, but two. Investment and Finance Committee, and I want to applaud Mr. Kildee for having thorough discussion and very, very, very good discussion, and staff as well, particularly on the investment side. Just one announcement, I'd like to do a shout-out with major kudos to Martin Schum, Gary Cushing, and the Camrio Chamber of Commerce. I had the privilege last weekend of attending Startup VC, the Startup VC.
Startup Weekend.
Startup Weekend, thanks. I was about ready to say festivities, and that was a totally wrong way to describe it, but for those of you who may not know what Startup Weekend Ventura County is all about, the whole idea is to have entrepreneurs pitch their ideas for product development and new product development to, and form teams to, after pitching those ideas and the ones that are selected, to form teams, to put those ideas together, to try to bring them to fruition over the course of a long weekend, and they work with experts in their field. And particularly this year, it was, the two fields that were focused on were in healthcare and ag. And I had the pleasure of going on Friday evening when the initial pitches were first done, and then on Sunday evening when the judging was done. And the progress that was made over that, in essence, 48-hour period was really extraordinary. And I know there were a number of, there were a number of ideas that were pitched that looked very promising. And from an economic development standpoint, from encouraging our entrepreneurs' standpoint, and particularly our young entrepreneurs, I think it's a, it's a great program. I know it's in its second year. I know the council has supported, the city has supported, and I'm very glad of it. And again, I just want to give major kudos to Martin Schum and Gary Cushing and the Chamber of Commerce for spearheading it. I think it's just an excellent program. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I was there also with Tony, and I was very much impressed. I don't, there must have been 30 people bring up proposals. And so it lasted a little while. They all got, what, minute and a half, three minutes? But they made some pretty good proposals. I'd like to thank the, was it, who gave them the $10,000? Somebody just contributed a lot today, I found out, to one of the winners. So we've had a lot of money donated. I think it was, God, the one that does all the chips out there, Charlotte mentioned earlier.
Simtech.
Yep, Simtech, I think gave out a lot of money to the winners this time. So it, and what they proposed were very, very good projects. Anyway, it was exciting to listen to all that. And they formed with other kids to make teams, and adults, of course. Simtech people, other adults there to help them form their teams and come back with a really good product. So I think what Mr. Schum started a long time ago, and Kerry's joining him now, I think is fantastic for the city of Camrio.
Can I ask you a question, Mike? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the city of Camrio is very much involved in that, not just the county, is that right?
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
We're one of those. They call us a sponsor, or?
Yeah, we're a sponsor.
Yeah, we're a sponsor.
Yeah, we've put up $10,000 worth of prize money.
Mm-hmm. So it's not just the county?
No, it's just not the county.
The city is very much involved in this.
No.
Am I right on that?
They call it Ventura County, but it's, it's held here, done here. Also attended the thing called Caltrans Earth Day, I think, some of you may have read that. I was the only elected official showed up, had four reps from other elected officials, and we cleaned the bridge all the way across the Santa Clara River. Two and a half hours of pushing and piling and pushing and piling. And I said.
Didn't have to go to the gym, did you?
I didn't. In fact, I had a little soreness over here when I'm pushing that direction all the time.
I was at Pilates class while you were doing that.
Yeah, while I was sweating my buns off, because it was hot that day, too.
I bet.
Anyway, some good things did happen out of that. A lady by the name of Deborah Wong, and she is the district manager of Caltrans. Is it district manager?
I don't think so.
Deputy District Manager of Caltrans. That means she's over the guy that's in our area. She has a much bigger area. And I told her about the Central Bridge. "Oh, I want to go look at it." I said, "Okay, I'll take you." So I took her to Central Bridge, and as we came over it, we had to wait for six cars to go by, and then we parked over there by the strawberry thing. She says, "We don't have to go any further. I saw it. It's all, you know, it's all chopped up, and you don't want our streets looking." And she says, "Well, whose is that beautiful street?" I said, "That's ours. That's what our streets look like." And she says, "Maybe we can make a deal, a maintenance deal, or something, you know, where they'll come in and make it all perfect. And then we can, if we can make a deal, maybe we can maintain it, and we would make our maintenance." I said, "We also would like, love to have a stoplight here." I said, "You saw what you saw, but wait until 4:00, 3, 4:00, and you'll see a whole lot more backed up." And so she took that, and one more thing. Where the cars were rolling off onto, off the road, you get on the freeway at Lewis, going south, at one time, there were no guardrails. It turned out, I was there one day when one rolled off and hit my daughter's car, landed on it. The guy said it saved his life, because he didn't get crunched. Well, I found out for the guy working, I went to high school with, for Caltrans, it's Mike at 6:00. 6:00 is rolling off here. I said, "6:00? No kidding? Why haven't they done some guardrails?" So I passed it on from him to his boss, saying, "If another one rolls off, I'm going to tell them that we, the city, told them that's a dangerous situation." In three weeks, they put those guardrails up. Well, this time, on the other side of the railroad track, you know, on the freeway, they don't have guardrails over there. Two have gone off over there, I found out. So I told her that, she took notes, and so we may get our guardrails on the other side. Anyway, it was worth, it was a worthwhile trip to be there, after all, for the city. Maybe it'll, something will work out. I turned over and said, "Call Dave Norman. He'll be in charge of it, not me, of getting this done." So hopefully, Deborah will give you a call. Airport Authority, we were there, had a little bit of upping fees and some other things, but just normal. Short business meeting, though. Nuremberg Retirement, most of us went to her retirement from hospice, and that was very well-tended, nice, nice program for her. The mural dedication, those that didn't go, you missed a beautiful mural. If you hadn't seen it, got to drive over and look at it. The lady who did it is fantastic, and it makes that building look a whole lot better. They were selling phones, these old phones with a speaker here and there's, they had tons of them, like 200. Well, I bought two of them. I turned them over to my daughter, and Rocket Fizz bought all the rest of them that were left over to put in their stores. It's kind of like their, you know, genre.
Did you get the Pink Princess phone?
No. No, no, I got the one that, like this. And then we, the Ranch House Foundation, we had a meeting. Charlotte, you going to discuss that? I'll let you discuss it. You weren't there, though, were you? You were there.
I had one of them with you.
Yeah, you were there, I think. It's been so many we've had. Anyway, we had that meeting. I really am impressed by Mr. Daley. I think he's made a huge difference in that program. Utilities Committee, we had today. Kevin had his third committee meeting today.
You go to one?
Good, Kevin, you had three of them. And we've got some things that'll be coming back in the future. Startup Weekend, we went over that, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
I'm just trying to figure out when the Ranch Foundation meeting was that you were talking about that was since the last council meeting.
Well, it's in your book. You look.
It didn't meet last Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't with them, it's you and me met.
That's exactly it.
I made a mistake, sorry.
I did not attend a Ranch Foundation board meeting.
No.
It wasn't on my calendar.
Confused, confused. It was our meeting, representing the city.
Okay.
Okay, I'll let you carry.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss a meeting.
Go call Ranch House.
Love to go to those meetings. I attended the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting this afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00. I attend, there was, other than discussion of the plan, the sigma, there was really, and that was just in very general terms, there was little that affected us, other than the fact that the part of the plan for the Oxnard Plain, they have the farmers meeting together, and they have the municipal and industrial customers meeting together. And I'm not sure if they're going to get together, or if it's never the twain shall meet. But they are getting closer in their proposals. So we'll, we'll see where all that ends up. I attended a Policy Committee meeting. We had one of the policies on our agenda tonight. I attended a Ranch Liaison Committee meeting, or a Ranch Committee meeting with Mr. Morgan, and we discussed their audit at that. And I attended a Citizens Appointment Committee with Mr. Tremblay. I also presented a certificate for the mayor at the mural presentation. It wasn't a ribbon-cutting, but it was very nice at the Pleasant Valley Historical Society. The side of the building, I've got to say, you know, the city owns that building, and it sure looks better with the mural on it than, than when it was white. What I presented was a dummy-dubbed version of the check for $2,000 to help them with costs of materials to paint it through the community service grant program that we have. And it had come along very well. I must say, I took my grandson down three times, and we inspected as they were, as they were doing it, and he got an idea of how you do some professional art, was start, was drawing it out and then paint it. You don't just start painting. It was, it was good. And I have an article here from the LA Times, I think it was Saturday, no, last Thursday, well, I read it on Saturday, about a bug that has a stranglehold on the region's urban trees, namely sycamores. And it's some kind of a bug that's just killing sycamores all over LA County, and I was wondering if we have a problem with this? Because we got a lot of sycamores around here.
A common name for that is a shot-hole borer, and it's one of the, there's several different pests that are a boring pest, and, you know, whenever we take a look at the condition of a tree, we inspect for that. We have lost some to that type of a borer, whether it's this particular one, I'm not, you know, exactly sure on, but.
No, it is the shot-hole borer.
That one's not?
It is.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're talking about.
Right, yeah.
They're talking thousands of trees.
Right.
Okay, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kildie?
Yeah, I did tend some committee meetings, Utilities along with Mr. Morgan, and Finance and Investment along with Mr. Trimbley. And just a couple of questions, how's that coming along with the traffic light at Donegan and Arneal?
The item that's been going on right now is the fabrication of the poles, they're all custom-made, and they're actually out of state. The poles have been completed, and it requires a final inspection for acceptance, that they meet all the design criteria, so that's coming up soon. And then actually, any field work, they don't want to start until they know the poles and the equipment will be ready to be installed. So about two weeks ahead of the poles showing up on site, they'll begin the site work. We're replacing the handicap ramps on all the corners. Expect that to happen in the next month or so for that work to start. I don't have an exact schedule on that yet, they're waiting for the final inspection of the poles to be completed, and then to back into the schedule from that. So we expect in the next, in the next month, I would say, the next four to six weeks, that construction will begin out there.
How long does it take, once you get all the implements together? What's it take to start to finish, roughly?
Yeah, I mean, start to finish, like we said, we've got some initial concrete work, and then installation of all the poles, the foundations, there's some cure time on that before they can set the poles. I'd venture to guess a month to two months or so, and then we have pave out, we're going to be repaving the intersection there also, and then striping, so, you know, roughly about two months, I'd say, at the longest.
Okay. Kevin, can I follow up on yours?
Yeah, certainly.
Just a second. Did we refer that potential bumps in that, for that Donegan--
Yes.
--from the school down?
Yes, we have a Streets and Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for May 2, and that's one of the items on the agenda.
Anything else?
Also, the coffee purveyor that's going in at, I think it's the crossroads at Las Fosas and Somas, will there be any changes in the entrance and exit to that center there?
No, there will be a widening of the drive-through for easier maneuvers of vehicles, but there's no configuration changes to the circulation network.
So the directionals will be self-explanatory like they are now, in other words, I'm looking for a little bit more activity there, and they will definitely, the directionals will be directional.
Yes.
Yeah.
Instructional.
Instructional.
Easy to understand once they have their coffee.
Yeah, that's it.
Or you pour.
One thing, I just want to thank the staff for working for, on the Disalter, as long as the staff and the council members have, and there was some direction given at the last council meeting, and I, as a council member, really appreciate you looking into this very thorough, and perhaps moving forward with this. So I just want to commend you, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I want to remind everyone that this Saturday, between 8:00 and 12:00, is one of our community shred events, and it's at Rancho Capone High School from between 8:00 and 12:00. I think the limit is 10 boxes, and they do take a $5 donation that goes to one of the organizations there at the school that helps run it, but it's a good day to take down--
Who's holding this one, Jen?
It's at the high school.
Is it through--
It's one of their organizations. I don't know if it's their parents' group, I think it's been that in the past.
And that's Saturday, Jen?
Saturday, between 8:00 and 12:00. And you just go down there, get in line, it's a great way to get rid of documents that should not be thrown away, especially in this day and age of identity theft, so--
That's great.
Easy to do. They'll help you, take it down there, and they'll put it in their big shredder, and you get to watch it get ground up, so you know it happened. I have one item that I'd like a little bit of further information on. It was an ad that came out regarding the Camrio Ranch's Kids' Summer Camp, I think they're calling it, and I just may be a little confused by this advertisement. It doesn't talk about exactly whether it's a camp that kids go to without their parents, or if it's something that the parents go along with, and I would just like to know more, and I don't know who, which staff member oversees this or works with them, but I want to be sure that if indeed they're doing a kids' camp, that they have licensed for a day, you know, for kids, and be able to do that. So just to double-check, because it's a little confusing when I read this, whether it's something the parents have to be with them, then you don't have quite the restriction, or if you're going to leave your children, then we want to make sure everything's in order, because we definitely don't want to have anything go astray.
But, yeah. But I want to make sure that the folks at home know that this is not a city of Camrio Summer Camp.
No.
No, it's not, but it's on our property.
It's on our property, but we have absolutely nothing to do with its programming, or its scheduling, or advertisement.
Correct. But it's on our property, run by a board that we appoint, so I think it's up to us to keep a little bit of an eye on things. Policy-wise, I think we've talked about most of them, and of course, you saw the work of the Policy Committee today, and there's a few more to come. Remind everybody about May the 2nd being Harrison's 85th birthday. Now, I challenge one of you to say you were here when they started.
Not yet.
Okay.
Give me time.
But 85 years, that's pretty good for a family business like that.
When I'm 85, I'll claim it anyway, what the heck.
So that's Tuesday, May the 2nd, so congratulations to them. The other one that, I was out looking at the sites for the Disalter, and I was a couple of other places throughout this last week, just looking at things that were going on. And at the high school site, there were a bunch of weeds along the fence, and I wasn't sure whether they were over on our side, or if they're on the school's side, and it made me start to look around, and we reached that time, we had all this rain this year, so everything grew, and I don't think we mind seeing weeds, because they were green. Everybody just wanted to see green. So if you can, someone can check on that one, see, because it doesn't look really presentable.
Are you referencing Camrio High School?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ranch, I was at the Disalter, Rancho Capone.
And--
Right along the fence line?
Okay.
The chain-linked fence--
Between the library and the--
No, over towards the homes.
Okay.
Talking about the old piece of property by the water pump that's there now, I turned that into Joe the other day.
You, okay.
It's really up to the walls.
Yeah, so I think it's the school districts, and it's probably a sight they're not seeing, because it's way off to the side, but--
The site that Mr. Morgan is referring to is different than the one I think--
Yeah, it is different.
Well, then we have a couple of them around town, so I assume the fire department's out on their annual notices, too, on empty lots to get [BLEEP] up and--
We followed up on a property that you mentioned to us the other day, Mr. Morgan.
They're going to cut it down?
We're working on that, yes.
Good, okay.
The only other thing I would ask is if tonight we can adjourn in the memory of a longtime resident of Camrio, I don't know if you all knew Bill Brandt, he, after he got out of the service, he went to work for Southern California Edison, and he worked for them for many, many years, and he lived here in Camrio, but he's probably most known for his acting ability. He was in a lot of the different play, you know, groups throughout the community, but also did a lot of commercials and so forth. He was an active member of the Camrio Arts Council for many, many, many years, just a really super guy, and we lost him this week, so if you don't mind, I'd like to--
Before we leave--
Yeah.
I had one more thing, I forgot, Charlotte, Jen?
Just a second.
Okay.
So I would like to adjourn in his memory, and I will pass this along to the city clerk, so we can do that. So you're okay? Good. All right, Mr. Morgan, you forgot--
I forgot about this, because we have the A O A P, this is where 700 airplanes are going to come in here this weekend, 700. And they're going to be shuffling them around everywhere to shop, and our factory, Alamo, is going to be busy, but they'll be camping out, and going to hotels, and all kinds of stuff, and the overflow will be going over to Oxnard Airport, and they'll be shuffled back here with a shuttle and all that stuff, so it'll be a very busy, if you see a lot of planes in the sky, I mean, a lot, that's the reason.
They come in starting Thursday night?
They come in some Thursday night, then Friday, they really all come in, a lot of come in Friday.
It may look like we're being invaded, but we're not.
It does, but we're, they have different ones located, they're making circles over by Moore Park, and they're making circles out here over Ventura, and when they tell them to come in, then they come in, and their groups come in. It's that busy, but it's going to be a huge thing for the county, because that's a lot of people to come spend money and do things, and see their planes, and we're lucky, we tried it before in the past to get them, they go all over the United States, and they picked us this time.
And my understanding is that a lot of it is open to the public, so the public can go out, look at the planes--
And go out, look at the planes, yes.
--and see it, so--
And they'll have events out there, you just go talk to them, and they'll have some things going on.
And I was remiss, I'm glad you covered it, Mr. Morgan. Imagine 600, roughly 600 planes there normally, another 700 this weekend. I mean, and there's going, there's an exhibit hall and all kinds of activities that are going on, so it's a really important, really significant event for us to have.
And they're all, they're not huge, but they're all sizes and age, are there vintage ones that come, too, or is this more just--
These aren't large planes.
Well, I realize that, but some old ones, or are they just now modern people who fly their own planes?
All types.
It'll be all types, but I imagine probably the commemorative air force will have its planes out, and everyone will be displaying what they're--
So it'll be fun for people to go out, if you like airplanes, place to be.
If you have a grandson, you can take him out there.
And if you don't go there, go see the Pleasant Valley Historical Society mural, because it tells the story of Camrio. It is so well-done, so--
Very well.
Well, that one's not--
You go to both.
That one's not going anywhere, so they can do that one the next weekend. All right, anything else? Mr. City Attorney, would you remind us what we have left, please?